Somebody can grab the back door for us, please. Thank you. Call this meeting in order from Board of Trustees, three rivers. Doctor Hager is going to lead us in prayer first, please.
Good day, Father. We come to you in current today, Lord. We thank you for the day that you've given us and we thank you once again for the opportunity to be here today, Lord. Lords, we go to this meeting, we pray for guidance and knowledge and wisdom, lords, to make decisions for this institution. Lord, I ask you to be with everyone that's here today who lived up in prayer of those people. Lead us, guide us, direct us in all things we do. All these things, we ask in your precious name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Should have the agenda for today's meeting there in front of you. If I can get a motion to approve that. Motion in second. All those in favor say aye. You get the minutes from the October board meeting also. If you have a chance, look those up.
Move to approve as presented.
Motion in second. All those in favor say aye. Ms. Charlotte Ubede has presentation of the college financial report.
Here are our fourth books from page seven. And look, this is last fiscal year compared to the current fiscal year as of September 30th. So that's the end of the first quarter of the fiscal year. So you can see there, not unlike previous months, that we've seen a ton along on the revenue side of things. Below where we were last year, again, part of that declining enrollment pattern that we talked about before. Quite a bit ahead in Dr. Student Aid group as well as the federal grants group, those are both affected by the CARES Act coming. There's institutional portions in the federal grants and the student portion that's in the student aid. Next page, then looking at our expenses, again, very similar to previous months. Very similar to the previous year, except for our course scholarships again for the same reason. And then finally on page nine, if you look at revenues minus expenses, we're actually ahead of where we were this time last fiscal year. So that's good news. Has that been on page 12? We look at our budget actual, we budgeted for that decline in enrollment. On that tuition fees, this is as of October 31st, it's the third of our fiscal year, four months in. October is the beginning of the registration period for our winter and spring terms. So you'll see that tuition start to climb up as those registrations happen. So that's kind of on the uptick now, so still early in October. So sixty-three percent of our budgeted revenue there from tuition and fees. So that's a pretty good mark to have at this point in fiscal year. Other categories, again, very much as you would expect at this point in the year. And then at the bottom half of that page, you know, expenses, sort of using the thirty-three percent of the fiscal year as a guide. You see most of those categories fall very close to that mark. Overall, that's only twenty-six percent of our budget that's been obligated on the expense side. So very conservative. This does reflect the budget amendments that the board adopted last board meeting. So those are reflected in that number. On page fourteen, we're looking at our capital budget. Again, this is reflective of the budget amendments that were approved last month. So you see some changes on our projects there as some of those funds were reallocated and around to fund projects as discussed. Following that, then we're looking at our cash position on page seventeen, looking at the cash pie, the zero. Pretty typical of things at this point in the fiscal year. We are processing financial aid for the fall term, so that has been an influx of cash. So that's going to make that a little bit higher at this point in the fiscal year and you'll see that declining as the semester goes on. Following that, we have our CDs. We, again, do not have any contingency fund CDs. We have all of that invested in the checking account, present that final return that CDs do. The rest of those CDs then are scholarship and down next CDs. So on page twenty, we don't have any changes in contingency fund CDs. And then on page twenty-two, we have a bid, couple bids out for the Saxon roof and the library RFID system. The library RFID system also has the recommendation that it is funded through the CARES grant. And the recommendation is for the low bidder of FE technologies.
Low bidder, they're showing here they're about $4,000 higher but have a longer maintenance agreement?
Right. When you look at the total cost, including maintenance agreement, that makes them lower.
Any questions for Ms. Ubede? You have a motion to accept the financial report as presented?
Go move.
I'll second.
Motion in second. All those in favor say aye. It's the president's report, not the pending.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To start off, we've had our second in the series of advising seminars, our cover advising seminar. We were able to serve forty-seven students, both in person and via Zoom. And students who attend our advising seminars receive a fifty-dollar scholarship for attending. So what we're trying to do with these is create an opportunity for our students to come together with our advisors to get some very directed attention. So that we're sure they're on the right track, one of many pieces that we've got in place to keep our students going strong. We celebrated Media Literacy Week, October 25th through 29th. So the library put on four separate events, as you see there. Really some interesting conversations about what you see in the media, how to verify valid sources and how to judge information and determine what is a valid source of information versus something that you should be a little more skeptical about. So a lot of great responses from that program. October 26th, the patrons of the arts features the Brazilian All-Stars, put on a great show, had a decent crowd. Our fine arts crowds are still being suppressed, I believe, because of the pandemic, but it is starting to improve. Music Department had their fall recital on October 28th. Those kids did an absolutely fantastic job in presenting their fall recital. A lot of times, recital is a little bit rough. You know, this is one of the learning opportunities for our music students to present in front of a live audience. For some of those students, it may well be the first time they've been in front of a live audience. These students did just an exceptionally splendid job in presenting their material. So my compliments to Professors Cindy and Buddy White, to Ms. Sharon Mitchell, and to Doctor Kunis, who orchestrated the fall recital and assisted the students. Our student leadership group hosted trunk or treat on October 30th. This is an event that years ago the college did every year. We haven't done it in a number of years. And the Student Leadership Academy felt like this was a program and project that they really wanted to take on. They did a great job. They had a number of trunk or treat stations set up and had a great response from the community. And the community really gave us some positive feedback on the event. So Doctor Mariah Ryan Anderson and her committee leads the student leadership group or orchestrates that program. And this was, the students themselves actually put all of this on, secured all of the materials they needed to do it, organized the event, got the work out. Great learning opportunity for them. We finally were able to hold our ribbon cutting for the expansion of the Chris Technology Center. We were fortunate that Harry Chris Senior was able to come in town and participate. Of course, former Speaker of the House, Todd Richardson was there. He was a major, major player in securing the funding from the state to make sure this project happened. Well attended by the community, really a great event, thanks to all those who helped orchestrate that. We've held two athletic tournaments. So the first was the Raiders First Midwest Classic. Three Rivers Link Year Prep with Johnny Logan. Had a good showing, had some good preseason bond going on. And the Raiders did a fine job of showing where they're at and how they're improving. And then the Lady Raiders have the Drewry End Classic. They smoked all of their competition and the event was well attended and well funded by our sponsors. So really a great start to the preseason tournaments timeframe. Then MCCA had held their annual conference. We had two faculty members who were honored. Stephanie Runquist was honored with the Governor's Teacher Award. And Ms. Dionne Thompson was our senior service award winner. So great representation for our college and the state there. Then Kennet Tribune Night was November 11th. Twenty-five hundred dollars was raised to benefit students at our Kennet location. So a hundred percent of what is raised goes to student scholarships in Kennet. And then moving on to some upcoming events. November advising seminar will be November 17th. Counselors Conference will be held November 19th. This is where we call in a number of our counselors and show them what's going on at the college, talk to them about the coming year, and trade information about what they need and how we can help their students moving forward. Music Department held their fall concert on November 23rd, 7:00 PM, at the Tennant Fine Arts Center. That's a free admission event. Our Thanksgiving holiday will be next week. We're no classes from the 24th through the 26th. And we will be closed the 25th and 26th. The Isaacs is a partner show between the Rogers and the Patrons of the Arts. That will be held at the Rogers Theater, 7:00 PM on December 3rd. Ticket prices are thirty dollars. And then a Christmas Carol, a full stage production, is coming to the Tennant Center as a patron of the art show. That will be 7:00 PM, December 7th. Tickets for that are fifteen dollars and available online or in the student accounts office or the Tennant Center art gallery. December 10th is our employee Christmas breakfast. You see there last year's crazy slatter contest. R and P will be December 10th, 2:00 PM at the Tennant Fine Arts Center. And then at 4:00 PM on the same day will be the Practical Nurse Penning. So the fall culminating event for those cohorts. Christmas break will be closed from December 20th to January 2nd. Then on January 3rd will be the first day of the spring semester. After the new year will get kicked off and started again in a big way. January 10th is spring convocation. Close January 17th for Martin Luther King Jr. Day. And our last item for the president's report is, I would like to point out that this is the last board meeting that Ms. Janine Heath will be attending. She is scheduled to retire at the end of this semester. So I would like to thank her for her service to the board and to the college.
Five years ago, I came to the board and they'd send out these emails that would say, Governor's going to be on campus Tuesday, or there's a breakfast for all employees. And I called Janine and said, am I supposed to be at this? Or do you not want me there? Tell me what we're doing here. Come on in, girls. And so Janine would tell me whether I was supposed to be there or not. Tell me how I'm supposed to dress. And she kept me out of trouble.
Bring this, bring that.
Yeah. For five years, I sat here and watched business owners and psychiatrists or psychologists and school administrators and county clerks run these meetings so flawlessly. And I was dreading the first day I sat here because I thought, how bad am I going to botch this thing? And I sat down and I had one of these. And then I figured out how they did do it. Janine lays it all out perfectly for us. I called Doctor Payne two months ago and I said, I feel like I want to do something for Janine as chairman of the board, or me and my wife, or as the board as a whole, I want to do something. He said, I think that'd be great. Let's talk about it. And the next day Darren Garrison called and said, I think we ought to do something for Janine. The problem with that is when you want to do something, you call Janine. And Doctor Payne said, Edie can handle it. And so I called Edie. Edie handled it. So I want you to know, we are in very, very good hands with Edie, but she'll never replace Janine. Nobody will. So thank you.
Well, it's been a pleasure. In 2012, I believe at the October meeting, I arrived for the first time to the board. I had absolutely no idea what I was doing. But we had some really great board members and have had more since then that have helped tremendously. I've enjoyed the time at the college. It's been over ten years. I'll miss you guys, but I'm still around. It's not like when I left other jobs and I did, I'm not going to lose. So hopefully we'll say goodbye and thank you so much.
With that, we do have executive session today. So if we can get a motion to adjourn into executive session?
I'll say it.
Motion in second. It's a roll call vote according to my notes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Hager?
Yes.
Trustee Garrison?
Yes.
Trustee Shaw?
Yes.
Trustee Williams?
Yes.
Trustee Pedersen?
Yes. Return. All right, we're back in session with you. And Mr. Eric Shaw, you have a motion for me?
I do have a motion for you, sir. It would be that I make the motion that we formally make a formal resolution calling for an election for the E to be adopted. And two, Edie Dilbeck be the recording secretary, formerly appointed to serve as the election authority.
All right, this is for the express on April 22 of the six-year terms of trustee Garrison, trustee Pedersen. Election will be held on April 5th of 2022. Any discussion on that? If not, we'll entertain a good motion in second, so we will do a roll call.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Hager?
Yes.
Trustee Garrison?
Yes.
Trustee Shaw?
Yes.
Trustee Williams?
Yes.
Trustee Pedersen?
Yes. Consideration, discussion, and vote on FY21 Annual Audit that we got the report on today.
Payne, you want to handle that? Do you want me to?
Yes, I can handle it. So the audit has been completed. The audit resulted in an unmodified opinion. And we would ask that you approve and adopt the audit.
I would make that motion.
Second.
Motion in the second. There's also a roll call vote before that. I would say, considering all the changes and all the hassles of coronavirus and pandemic and CARES money, it was a very, very smooth year. And thank you, Charlotte.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Hager?
Yes.
Trustee Garrison?
Yes.
Trustee Shaw?
Yes, ma'am.
Trustee Williams?
Yes.
Trustee Pedersen?
Yes. So bottom three, consideration, discussion, and vote on contract for Saxon roof replacement.
Yeah, so we would have to bid to replace the roof on the Saxon building, which has been problematic from shortly after construction. It is our recommendation that we take the low bid from Jonesboro Roofing. It contains a much more wind resistant shingle and also includes some changes to the roof line that will improve the design.
Is there any insurance money involved in that?
Is there a possibility of warranty claim with these standards?
We went through that process and of course Tamco says there's absolutely nothing wrong with their shingles.
Well, that ended right there.
Me too.
Don't they require arbitration on things? Don't they have like an arbitration thing that you can't sue them?
Yeah, they're, the whole deal with the Tamco warranty is set up to benefit Tamco, not the cost owner. I mean, that's really what it comes down to. We could go down that path and most likely we would not prevail, but we would have spent probably half of what it's going to cost us to re-roof the whole building. The 226 number does include a twenty thousand dollar contingency. So the contract is for 206 and I'm asking for your authority to sign the necessary documents.
Is that going to take the over as well?
Oh, yes.
Any other discussion?
I don't like that motion.
Signing.
Motion second to approve the bid to re-roof the Saxon building. You mean?
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Hager?
Yes.
Trustee Garrison?
Yes.
Trustee Shaw?
Yes.
Trustee Williams?
Yes.
Trustee Pedersen?
Yes. Consideration, discussion, and vote on bond 24B and 2014 refund.
Yes, so with us today is our bond attorney, Mr. Mark Grimm. Not only to join us is Charlie Zitnick. He is the agent with DA Davidson, who assisted us in setting up the market offering. Where we are at is we still have three bond series that are outstanding. We have 2012B for total amount of three million seven hundred and thirty thousand. Series 2014 at six point four five million. And then series 2016 at four point seven eight five million. This represents the total outstanding debt of our institution, having already paid off the series 2012A. Series 2012B and 2014 will become callable, meaning that we could pay them off or restructure them in April of 2022. You are allowed to lock all of your moves in ninety days prior to the call date. So in anticipation of that, we partnered with DA Davidson to go to market and see what kind of deal and what structure could be worked out to pay off or call part of the two series that will become callable and then to refinance the rest. So what we've ended up doing, what we were recommending, is we're going to call or pay back five million dollars of those two series. And we will then refinance or refund the remaining roughly five point four million dollars. And the rate that we have been offered on that green issue is one point four four percent from Truist Bank, formerly BB and T. And that will result in a net present value savings to the college of roughly one point three million dollars. In addition to that, we are recommending that we capture the savings from the reduced interest rate and pay the new issue off earlier than the original issue would have been stretched to. So this issue, which will be the 2022 series, will mature and be complete in 2027. So we have paid off a chunk of debt, if you approve this. And we will shorten the time that we will be in debt on what is left of the 2012, 2014 series by a considerable factor. I believe the mature date on the 2014 series was either 2034 or 2035. So we shortened that considerably. Then future thinking, the 2016 series is callable in April of 2024. And we can prepare what we're going to do with that in the two years before it becomes callable. But those are at a coupon rate around three percent. So my anticipation would be we would prepare to call as much of the 2016 series in the future. And we would leave the 2022 series alone at one point four four percent. I quite frankly am amazed at the rate that we have been able to get on this. Given my perception, and I think most financial professionals' perception of what rates are going to do between now and April, being able to lock this in at one point four four is a huge win for the institution. Mr. Grimm, is there anything to add to that?
Well, I would say two things. Number one, appreciate the opportunity to work with you all on this. And secondly, I think that rate is really a testament to your good financial condition and operations. And in fact, if you got seven bids and with a rate of one point four, given the fact that you just mentioned, it's just really, really incredible. So I'd be happy to answer any questions. As Doctor Payne said, this resolution approves the issuance of what was called 2022 certificates of participation. So you're authorizing, this one resolution authorizes the chairman and secretary to execute all the documents and the officers to execute documents to carry out the transaction, which would close on January 5th.
So the million dollars in savings that you said the college is going to capture over the reduced interest rate, is that over the life of the bond or?
That's over the life of the bond. That's the net present value.
Of the net present value of the current bond.
Correct. What we're doing versus what we're currently, I'm going to do it, yes.
I make a motion to approve.
I'll say it.
Motion in the second to approve restructuring of the bonds and pay the officer refund.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Hager?
Yes.
Trustee Garrison?
Yes.
Trustee Shaw?
Oh, yeah.
Trustee Williams?
Yes.
Trustee Pedersen?
Yes. Consideration, discussion, and vote on PP 4330, shared sick leave.
Yes, this is the shared sick leave policy of the college. It is overseen by the shared sick leave committee, of which a member of the board of trustees serves. So these were relatively minor changes that they felt needed to be made in the policy. One is a clarification of the start date of an employee versus when they can start participating in shared sick leave. And then there was addition of a clause relating to committee members with a conflict of interest, basically which says if you have, if you're a committee member and there's a conflict of interest in what you're about to vote on, you shouldn't vote on it. And that is the two changes to this policy.
Any questions on that? Move to. Number seven?
I'll second.
Edie?
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Hager?
Yes.
Trustee Garrison?
Yes.
Trustee Shaw?
Yes.
Trustee Williams?
Yes.
Trustee Pedersen?
Yes. Have a few things for you under personal actions and associated documents. Eric, do you have anything to say about that?
Let's just move to approve as presented, please.
Second?
I'll second that as well. Of course, with all associated documents.
I was wondering if you could give us a minute.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Hager?
Yes.
Trustee Garrison?
Yes.
Trustee Shaw?
Yes.
Trustee Williams?
Yes.
Trustee Bede.
Yes. Do not have a December board meeting. Next meeting will be January 19th. This time we just get a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Have a motion in second anywhere?
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Don't go anywhere. Hey, when's the opening day of the filing, correct?